Muscatine City Council will come to order. Fran, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ray Walt.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Dick.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Spread.
Present.
Six present, one absent, Your Honor.
Very good. Folks, would you rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. I have tonight an extreme honor for me to be able to recognize one of our citizens here in Muscatine. This person is, well, retired attorney. This person has participated, and this is just in the last four years, spearheaded our Blue Zone effort. This person, since 1985, has been, I would say, a true friend to the Chinese. And there's a whole lot more to her than I can tell you about. But it's my honor tonight to award a key to the city of Muscatine to Joni Axel. Joni, would you come forward, please?
Yeah, I thought I was going to be listening to Sarah. Thank you, Mayor.
You're quite well, more than well.
That's very, very special.
And would you shake a hand?
Much deserved kissing.
Okay, folks, that was actually under item four, communications from citizens. And at this time, item B is a presentation by Nancy Snant from Alliant Energy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. I like to come annually, about once a year, just to kind of give you an update on our partnership and activity that Alliant Energy has been engaged with in this past 12 months. We have a service center at 215 Oak Street. We have 18 employees reporting out of that service center. And this year, one of our key employees, Ann Chris, moved back to Minnesota, where she's from, back to be closer to her parents. And I'm very pleased to say that we found a very strong candidate to backfill that job. A gentleman named John Carney is working as our lead engineer in Muscatine. And I think some of you may have already had the opportunity to work with John, but he's excited to be here, and he hit the ground running. And we still have the same senior management in place supporting him. So just thank you also for being so welcoming to him. He did mention, Greg, that he's met you and the city engineer as well. So, and I'm here as your account manager if there's ever anything that I can do as well. Some of the other things that I get to do to support the community is I participate with the Chamber in Economic Development. And this year, we were recognized at the annual Chamber Dinner as a 70-year member. And that was really quite special. Of course, I don't remember that first year we were a member, but I understand it was awesome. Some of the foundation support this year, we supported the after-prom event, Muscatine Independence Day. We did an annual fundraiser for Crossroads and Halloween at the Y. And we did also have an opportunity to support trees last year with the tree planting program. There was a $1,000 grant toward that. And I had a chance to chat with Michael about maybe next year, when you get a little further along in your corridor project, if there would be some opportunity to do some trees after you get that kind of tied up, we might want to look forward to that, okay? So I'll be sure to send you some information. We're also quite a taxpayer in the community. In the city of Muscatine, we paid $129,147 in property taxes fiscal year 2014. And then in the county, we paid an additional $222,746. Also pleased to advise that we have had some very robust participation with the energy efficiency and rebate programs, and we paid out 668 individual rebates. That's pretty good participation from the citizens. And the payouts equaled $202,983. And then the dealers, these are the contractors that support the programs and help the customers with energy efficiency selection with new furnaces and things like that. The dealers realized an incentive of $27,235. Also do my part to try and connect with, like Chief Jerry and I had a meeting this year along with Teresa Johnson, and just to make sure that the emergency communication is happening in a way that makes the best sense for everybody. Greg and I meet periodically to talk about other opportunities. And I just want to make sure that, you know, you know we're here for you. We appreciate your business. And if there's anything I can do, feel free also just to reach out to me. Also, I do have a note on the investments in the community that we've spent $1.1 million last year. We did a lot of upgrades to the regulation station, and that was really, you know, for increased reliability and future capacity. So we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Counsel, anyone on the council have questions?
Where is that regulation station? You just...
There are many regulation stations, okay? And I don't have the locations of the exact ones, but I think it was a comprehensive upgrade. Because that's the other thing, is when they all go, when they were all addressed comprehensively, then we know what happened in 2015, and then they can budget for the next time this needs to be done, and it just makes more sense to plan that way.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council?
How long have the rebates and the energy conservation's been in place?
The rebates, we are mandated by the Iowa Utility Board to provide energy efficiency programs for all classes of customers. So we have customers, we have residential, commercial, and industrial programs. And these rebates take many, many forms. These energy efficiency programs, some people want to start with an audit, and we can help them with that. We do residential audits, commercial audits, industrial audits. And then the rebates, this is money that is paid back to you because as a customer, you're paying into these programs. And that's why if you're going to shop for a boiler, a water heater, commercial cooking equipment, I'm trying to remember just gas appliances because that's all I got for you is gas, or a furnace, take the form with you when you're going shopping. Because to qualify, you've got to buy something that's going to be a little more efficient than the baseline. That's what the rebates are for. I want to see somebody buy the most efficient furnace that they can get their hands on, and that rebate is going to buy that down a little bit because that more efficient technology oftentimes is a little more expensive. Now, is it fun to get a check in the mail for $250? Yes. But the most important thing is the reduced energy going forward, the energy savings on the bill year over year. And we've had energy efficiency programs for many, many years. Like I said, they're mandated by the Utility Board. And they change a little bit every year. The new programs for 2015 will be rolled out in January. And our website is really very robust. And we are going to have new billing system come out in January, and you'll see the bill is going to look a lot better, it's going to be a lot easier to understand, and it's going to have a new online portal for customers that's a lot more enhanced. And this is what customers want. They want to be able to have that information at their fingertips. And, but we didn't undertake this lightly, you know? It took a long time to vet what kind of billing system was going to be most effective for our customers and give us the features and the benefits that they wanted. And it's quite an investment. And they already rolled this out in Wisconsin, and it went pretty well. And then the Iowa customers, the new bill, you will see it in January or February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, council?
Well, I hope that was helpful, and again, I really appreciate the time. Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Doesn't happen very often, but occasionally in the 23rd hour of a council meeting, an item comes up before the council that needs to be discussed and then voted on. Tonight is one of those nights, and I don't know if, Greg, you or Randy, you want to...
I can take it, Your Honor. Public Works Director Hill received a call, I believe, from the Meekers this afternoon, Tom Meeker. And before you have a request for a land closure on the 29th, and a two-lane closure on the 29th, and a one-lane closure on the 30th of November, as they do demolition in the front portion of the building at 120 West Second Street, and clean up on Monday.
Marks.
That's, yes, we received that late this afternoon.
So I guess the...
Oh, yeah.
The point is, as council, we have to make a decision. You have to make a decision whether to approve this request or not.
So moved.
Second.
Second Osama. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, and closing out, item four, if there's anyone in council chambers that has an item or an issue they'd like to discuss with council that is not included on tonight's agenda, now would be the time to come to the lectern and tell us your name and address. Okay, we'll move along to item five, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A through C, items 8A through D, item 12A through C, and tonight's bill's totaling $1,679,919.17?
So moved, Your Honor.
I'll give that to Phil, and a second to Bob. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, now we're going to drop down to item seven, 7A, proposed electrical upgrades at the municipal airport. This public hearing concerns the proposed electrical upgrades at the municipal airport. The city entered into a grant agreement in August 2015 for the completion of this project. Anderson Bogart has successfully completed the design of the project, but before moving forward with the bidding process, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment? Is there anyone in council chambers that wishes to talk about this?
Move to close.
Motion to close, Osama, and a second Scott, and no discussion, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries six to zero. Going down to item 10, 10A, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plot for the Muscatine Point subdivision. The property owner has filed a combined preliminary and/or final plat for the Muscatine Point subdivision for a five-acre, three-lot subdivision on the south side of US 61 across from Walmart that is zoned M1 or light industrial. The intent is to develop the existing Taylor-Aker subdivision into a two-lot subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends city council approve the proposed Muscatine Point subdivision. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Phil, and a second Tom. Any discussion? And this is a roll call, beginning with Phil.
Aye.
And Mike.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
And Scott.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the final plat for the Martins subdivision. The property owners have filed for a combined preliminary and/or final plat for a one-lot subdivision in unincorporated Muscatine County but within two miles of the city limits. The intent is to allow for the house and buildings located within the proposed subdivision to be split from the adjoining farm ground, split from the adjoining farm ground and sold. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends city council approve the final plat for the Martins subdivision. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted? So moved. Bob? Second, anyone?
Second, Your Honor.
Was that you, Phil?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Also a roll call, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And Tom.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 11A, from the city administrator, which is a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting bid opening date for electrical upgrades at the municipal airport. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom.
Second, Your Honor.
Second Osama. Any discussion? Roll call, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
And Mike.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the assessment of unpaid abatement costs to private properties. Periodically, the city takes action to assess unpaid nuisance abatement costs and rental inspection fees to private properties. The fee being, the fee being requested for assessment at this time totals $15,122.86. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Give that to Osama in a second.
Second.
Second Phil. Any discussion? And this also is a roll call, beginning with Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And Bob.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Does anyone know where Mike went?
He had to leave. He left food in the oven and something on the stove, so he had to go home.
Oh.
I, I, sorry, Mayor, I suggested that he leave. I'd hate to see Welsh apartments go kind of poof.
Nastic matters.
And the fire department hasn't been called yet, so I assume it isn't on fire.
Okay.
Yet.
So you want to modify the roll call, Fran, to five?
He said aye.
He said aye, way out.
I know, but we have action items moving forward.
She'll just record that he left at such and such time.
I just put down letter seven fifteen, so...
Okay. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting a quitclaim deed from Sota Rock Properties LLC for the Mulberry Avenue from Plains Drive to Hauser Street reconstruction project. Sota Rock Properties LLC has agreed to donate .88 acres of property needed for this project. On June 18th, 2015, city council approved a memorandum of understanding with the property owner in exchange for improvements to the property for steam bed, stream bed stabilization and erosion control. The necessary plot of survey and quitclaim deed have been prepared and are ready for acceptance by city council. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
I give that to Scott, and Bob, you can have the second. Any discussion? Beginning with Scott, roll call. And Phil.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration are three resolutions setting public hearings concerning the declaration of real estate, former Colorado Street right-of-way as surplus property and offering said real estate for sale. The surplus property was created during the realignment of Colorado Street between Park Avenue and Colorado School to smooth out a severe curve. In July 2014, city council approved memorandums of understanding with the three property owners adjoining this area of surplus property. So here we go. Item number one, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted for Pearl, or parcel JJ?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom.
Second.
Second Bob. Any discussion? And a roll call, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
And Mike is gone, so that's five to zero. Number two, is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted for partial KK?
So moved.
Scott.
Second.
Second Phil. Any discussion?
I would like to add parcel LL along with that.
If...
Do they need to be individually done?
No.
Or can they just, can...
I think, yeah, that's why they were spelled out separately.
Sorry, Osama.
Cancel your request, and we're back to discussion on partial KK. Is there any?
Motion. Yeah, I'm second.
The motion is Scott.
And I'll second.
It's already been, yeah.
It's already been seconded?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a roll...
Oh, okay, that's what I had.
What I thought.
This is a roll call, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted for partial LL?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom.
Second, Your Honor.
And a second Phil. Any discussion? And a roll call, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
And Phil.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Okay, item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the fire department for the issuance of a purchase order for a new ambulance. Three bids were submitted for this purchase with the low bid from Foster Coach in the amount of $149,995. The trade-in value of the current ambulance is $3,000 for a final amount of $146,995. This bid adequately meets the specifications and deeds of the department. There is $148,500 budgeted for this purchase. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Phil.
Bob.
And we give the second to Bob. Any discussion, council?
No.
Fire chief, yes.
Yeah, I do have a question. Why, why is there only a $3,000 trade-in value? An ambulance is normally worth a heck of a lot more than 3,000.
Normally, they are, and that's why I wanted to come up to the podium to kind of elaborate. There's a few questions today. When this went out to bid, what we bid for was just the ambulance itself that we're replacing. So we are factoring in a trade-in value to make sure that we are under bid for what was budgeted for the project. And so that includes the new ambulance and the trade-in. We are being conservative with $3,000 because that's what Foster Coach is willing to give us. There's no resale value for an ambulance that's 14, the box is 14 years old, the chassis is seven years old, and it's going to have 200,000 miles on it, and it has the 6.0-liter turbo motor that everyone is staying away from, that they don't make anymore, that they had class-action lawsuit on. So there's no resale value for it to be an ambulance. Now, there would be resale for a utility vehicle, and it gives us a lot of options. What we're presenting you tonight is just, what I'm saying is that we are going to be under budget, so that's why we're saying the PO not to exceed that dollar amount. We're going to be under budget average. You normally get about $5,000 to $7,500 for a trade-in. If we, we have a lot of options. We can sell it, you know, on the auction, we can sell it on government websites, we can sell it outright. But what we're asking tonight is just saying that not to exceed this dollar amount, and we will be under budget.
Are any of the existing ones made by the same manufacturer, ambulances?
The, well, all three vendors spec the same, the same specs for the ambulance, but they are different, different ones. So the one is the AV, one is a Lifeline, and one is the one through Foster. And that's where we bought all of our ambulances before, is through Foster.
Okay, that's what I was asking, okay.
So this ambulance is one of the first ones?
It's actually the second one, but it's the one that we had more problems with. So we, we rotate the ambulances out every other year. So the two years from now, we'll actually be replacing the first ambulance. So this is one of the first ones.
This is one of the first four? Did we buy three?
Three initially.
Three initially?
And then we bought the fourth, and then we bought the fifth.
Okay.
What's it going to cost to fully equip this ambulance?
There will be no additional cost involved. All the equipment that we have will take off and put back into it. So there'll be no additional cost to stock the ambulance.
Anyone else, council? Thanks, chief. We have a motion on the floor by Phil, and a second by Bob, and any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, item F, and it's the last item on tonight's agenda, and it's not an action item, but if you recall, in last week's in-depth session, the last person on that agenda was Dave Gobin, the Community Development Director, who gave up his slot because the meeting was going pretty long. So tonight, you're on, Dave, and at this time, the Community Development Director, Dave Gobin, will give a presentation on building fee.
Greg, could you turn that on for me? There should be a remote right there.
There we go. Hi, it's on.
It's warming up. I'm going to be, try to be brief, but accurate. All of you have a package of information. You all know how to read, but primarily, the public is the only one that doesn't have a lot of this information.
That's all right.
So I'm going to try to go through this quickly, but understandably, I want to give you a sense of where we are and where we're headed. And that's primarily my, my role up here tonight. So I'm going to open this up.
Yeah, I left my hard copy at home. After I reviewed it.
You all set?
Yes, sir.
All right. Last time the building fee schedule's been adjusted was in 2005. That's over 10 years ago that was originally adjusted. We have a number of things that have happened over those 10 years. I don't think I need to say that a lot of things happened in 10 years. The idea was, and a lot of the work that was done, was understanding the commercial side versus the residential side, and how we compare against growing communities, because we are, in fact, on the growing side of the communities that are out there, not necessarily the ones that are not growing. And there's a lot of those as well. And those are actually some of the comparables we normally use. The electronic inspection program we're using, we're going to be launching in January, which takes a lot of data, we're doing right now, will be a big, big part of this program as to when we check things in the field, punch lists and things to check, and things won't fall through the cracks. It's not going to go by people's memories. And then those things will be electronically updated. things will be electronically updated so that we have everything at real time. The new thing I wanted to point your attention to was, was a building plan review. Everybody's heard of a site plan review, but what normal, normal communities that are growing put in place are plan reviews. And what they do is they look at the plans, the schematics of the buildings, and, and we've made the determination as a city here, as the building official have kind of led this point, and that is, from this point forward, whether you do any fee adjustments or not, we're going to require at a certain level that contractors or building owners are going to have to provide a schematics of electrical plumbing and mechanical engineered drawings. Because we have, we're finding ourselves most of the time, except for the high-end construction projects like HNI's project or GPC's, that we're not getting a lot of information until after the fact, which generally, if you have something to start with, you can then design your whole inspection program around that, as to when you're going to go visit and see where things are. We don't have that a lot, and we end up having to show up and catch people because they don't tell us when they're going to be doing stuff. So we have to, we have to do that. And that just really raises havoc on our manpower that we have, and we're trying to keep it minimized. The other thing is that we want to be able to access this online. If you have a permit active, you should be able to track where you are with that permit, and our, our new electronic program allows us to do that. I want it, and this is not very big, but you guys have it in your package, but we're going to go more towards a percentage of the job values on a number of things. If, if you're going to build a house, what I think I have here is an example coming up. If you're going to build a house, there's the structural aspect of it, that's the building permit, but then there is the plan review, which is going to be a percentage here. And then there's so much done in electrical, there's so much done in the plumbing, and there's so much done in the mechanical, that, you know, mechanicals also include the heating as well. With all of that in place, we're able to then find a way to gauge ourselves against the size of the project as it, as it goes out.
Would you clarify what you mean by ten to thirty percent on a commercial project? Ten to thirty percent of what?
We built a graduated scale. Ten percent, if it's like an eight thousand dollar project, it'd probably be on that lower end of the scale. And if it's on a larger end of the scale, it's a whole lot more complicated, a lot more effort being put into plan reviews. So therefore...
Having, having just been involved in a major construction project, that can be a huge number.
It can be, but if you're provided a lot of information and you don't have to go get it, then you can bring yourself into line. The, we're looking at sixty percent on most of the other area communities, and I'll give you some examples of that.
Is that, excuse me?
Forty, sixty, fifty.
Percent, but below where it says plan, building plan review, it's percent of building permit.
That's right.
So it'd be ten to, or twen, thirty percent of the building permit.
That's what I'm asking.
That's what you're asking.
Not the actual value of the project cost.
No, no, no. For example, if you built a hundred thousand dollar home...
I, I saw that as being really high, and it's like, uh...
Let me be clear about that. If you're building a hundred thousand dollar home, or a hundred thousand dollar commercial building, a percentage of that is going to be electrical. So whatever the value of that electrical job is, the electrical contractor you hire out for, they usually bid it, usually hire the bidder that meets your needs, they're going to bid ten thousand dollars for whatever the work was, whatever, whatever you spec. Just throwing hypothetical numbers out there. That's their job. That's the, so we're looking at a smaller percentage of that type of job. And then plumbing and mechanical follow suit. We, this gives you some sense of the different rate scales and changes. It puts us in a lot better position. A lot easier to calculate than trying to find, you should see the sheets of scales and grades and everything else here to try to put, to get, put together a permit fee. And this just makes it really clean and easy. I gave you some examples here, and I think that this is on a typical hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar house in comparison to other communities, to give you some sense of where we would fall, but this actually does a pretty good job. This, this gives you some sense of scale. We're almost at the bottom right now. The red bar is where we are. The green bar tells you where our fees would be with the increase, with the changes in, in the proposed fee schedule. So you can see, it's not a, and I, I want to make sure I was clear that we're not going to be the top end of this list of communities, but we're certainly not going to be at the bottom. We're trying to be in the middle, is really what our goal is. I want to give you some sense of the last five years of revenues that have been generated from our fees, and that, we had one, really one big year there, kind of spiked things up, but this does not, the other, the other permits, as you can see, are really designed around stuff that doesn't necessarily have to do with, with the construction side. But to give you some sense, we would be raising our revenues approximately, I think I recalculated those numbers. It's closer to seventeen to twenty percent, not necessarily twenty-four to thirty percent. It may be twenty-four to thirty percent on a commercial side, but it's way lower than that on the residential side. The idea was that we wanted to generate a pot or a side step of funds to be able to run plan reviews, because those need really focused effort and energy spent on that.
Who evaluate these plans? That comes, are, you generate this money and how you, where are you spending this money, all these fees that you are generating?
We're not, we're not generating those fees. We're not generating those fees yet.
I thought you're generating up to seventeen percent when it happens.
No, no. If we implemented, if we implemented the new fee schedule, that's what we would do. Now, I just screwed up here, but you got it in your package. I think I put in the, the other communities, when the last time they touched an adjustment. Some go back into...
Two thousand and four was Mason City.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember how old it was, but they, they go back in time.
Yeah.
So we're on the low end of that scale right now. But this is the game plan going forward. One was to get in front of you. I've been trying to get in front of you since July. So it was easy for me last week to say, oh, just push it off another meeting. Then we're going to start talking to the actual builders out there and get the stakeholders involved with this process. They understand where we're going and what we're trying to do. They may add some significant feedback that might be helpful. They did as well on the rental projects, the rental process, when we went through that as a council here, and I, and I implemented it, they were very valuable to having some feedback on that, and it helped us augment our, our plan. The other, the last couple items here is just that we want to, sometime first part of next year, I'd like to get these things implemented. And that's, that's the long and short, and I'm kind of available for any further discussion.
I had one question. You're, early on, you said some, you, you said something about having a schematic of the electrical, mechanical, and so forth prior to construction. You get it on bigger, bigger commercial. Are you expecting that on, on a hundred fifty thousand dollar residential property?
We'd like something.
Of the electrical?
We'd like something, because right now, we're going blind into these places, a lot of them, that don't provide that.
They don't have a, they don't have a building print?
We're getting napkins, Phil, you know, with drawings on them.
Okay, I, I can under...
And we have to figure out what they did, because they do it, cover it up, then call us in to say, we want a final inspection. Tom will tell you, that doesn't work.
That's what, yeah, I, I understand all about the inspections, but it's, it's having a, a isometric layout of the plumbing system in a building is probably not going to be provided by a, a builder.
No.
Having, having...
Probably right, but then you have plumbers.
I had an interesting example, that I was talking to a general contractor this week about bidding on the Little Caesars project. Building's too small, there are no requirements for, for exactly what he's talking about. So the general contractor is saying, what am I supposed to bid on? It's, it's a design build all of a sudden, you know. It, it... So there's no drawings on the project? No, there's no drawings on the project. At least none that they were presented with when they were asked to bid. So, so, you know, I, I think... And that's a, that's a commercial built, I mean it... Exactly. It's a commercial building, and why aren't there? And shouldn't there be? There should be. Yes. If you wanted to build a, a, a nine hundred square foot home, you'd have to have a drawing for it.
You generally do. I mean, you mean, what, they all teach you in business school or any kind of school, you, you start off with a plan, right? A plan could be a drawing in this case. A plan could be written. The point is that if you don't have a thought as to how you're going to build this dwelling, one way or the other, you're going to fail before you start.
I think you, I heard you say earlier in the conversation that there was going to be some sort of a threshold, which is...
Yeah, I, I was going to comment on that. We talked about at a certain level and above. We're probably going to, then we'll peel back as it starts getting successful at the, on the higher ends, we'll start applying it on the lower ends, but not, not going to, we don't want to paint everything with a broad brush right off the bat. That'd be way too hard to do.
But you are going to, you are obviously planning to have early meetings before...
Yeah. Talk about prevention. You prevent a lot of stuff happening if you do it early.
And please, please include me in those meetings. You are going to go off the reg, the, the contractors that are registered with the state of Iowa in Muscatine County, or Mus, City of Muscatine?
Yeah.
Or Muscatine County.
Yeah, we'll probably do a little circle beyond that, because they're coming down from Iowa City now and...
Davenport. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else on council with a question?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Have a nice vacation. Drive careful.
I'm going to make Bonnie drive. Oh, she's probably watching.
Now you're, now you're in trouble.
Communication from council members, beginning with Phil?
Nothing at this time, your honor.
God?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Osama?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Bob?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Tom?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Greg?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Fran?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
And I have nothing. Any other business, council? Is there a motion to adjourn? Any of the adjournments?
Osama only can do that.